Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the second Zoom meeting for the Cyber Fundamentals course. If we haven't met before, my name is Lauren Murray and I'm a senior legal officer in the Pacific Section at the Attorney General's Department. With me, I also have my colleague Nicholas Wilson, who will be assisting us with the Cyber Fundamentals courses. I would like to introduce our guest speakers for today. I'm happy to welcome two speakers from New Zealand who are able to join us today. Firstly, we have cybercrime investigator Constable M. Waite from Cybercrime Unit, New Zealand Police. And we have Tim Myers, Principal Advisor in the Pacific Incident Response Team at CERT New Zealand. Tim has previously worked in New Zealand Police's High Tech Crime Group as a digital forensic specialist. And we're pleased that he's kindly agreed to step in today for an Oconfederica who was unable to join us due to a family issue. Thank you for joining us. In this session, we will be looking at some of the concepts in the case study that we delivered during the last session and the general content that we're covering in the course. In case you weren't able to attend last week, I will now screen share the case study and read through it briefly once more. So please bear with me. Okay, so you should be able to see the case study on your screen now, but please let me know if not. So to reiterate the fact scenario that we considered with John Peacock last week, Maria, who is fifteen, and Kai, who is seventeen, live in the fictional country of Oceania and have been in a relationship for a few months. They met through Kai's friend Bob, who is eighteen. One day, when Bob was hanging out with Kai at his house, Bob downloaded and installed hacking software onto Kai's laptop to capture all of his social media passwords. Because the software was discreet, I didn't notice anything that happened. A few days later, the hacking software sent all of Kai's passwords to Bob's phone, including his Facebook password. Bob's wifi was down at home, so he went to the library to use one of their computers. He logged on to Kai's Facebook and pretending to be him, messaged Maria asking for nude pictures. Maria and Kai had previously exchanged nude pictures of themselves online, so Maria took some photos on her phone and sent them to Kai on Facebook Messenger. Once Bob received the photos on Kai's account, he uploaded them to explicit.com, a website which illegally holds explicit sexual pictures. Explicit.com paid Bob for providing those pictures. To ensure that Kai didn't find out what happened, Bob deleted Kai's Facebook account, logged off the library computer and went home. So in Zoom Session 1 last week, we had a further development in these circumstances, which was that Maria found out the pictures were circulating online from a mutual friend and broke up with Kai. He insisted he didn't know anything about them and had not shared them further. Kai tried to log into Facebook to find out what happened, only to discover his account had been deleted. Noticing that Maria was upset, her parents found out what happened and made a complaint to the police. The police arrested Kai and brought him into question. Further investigation following the interview with Kai uncovered the ISP address of the library computer which was used to upload the photos. Further inquiries at the library lead police to Bob. When he sees the police walk to his house, Bob quickly deletes the passwords and the explicit.com app from his phone, which he has used to view the pictures several times since he uploaded them. Today's fact scenario continued is that Bob has now been charged with a number of offences but is maintaining his innocence. Maria and her parents have decided they want to proceed with the complaint. So our meeting today is with a digital forensic specialist and a cybercrime investigations expert to discuss the techniques used in the case and the likely conclusions that will be outlined in the report. We will look at some questions we can ask about the digital evidence aspects of this case and the course content more generally. We will start sharing. You should be able to see my face again. So we'll start by considering some of those issues. If you have any questions about what we've studied today, including in our last fortnight session, please do feel free to jump in once we kick off with the questions. There are a range of ways to ask questions today. You can raise your hand as we did in the case studies. Feel free to unmute yourself and jump in when it's time for the next question. Or also feel free to post in the chat and we will keep an eye out for those questions being posted in case you're having any issues with the sound. I'll also just quickly recap our progress in the course so far. So at the moment, we're in Week 7 of the course. So if you're working to the course outline that we provided in the pre-course meeting, for lawyers and judges, this covers the content up to analysis and documentation. And for the law enforcement group, this covers the content up to the FTK imager test. But I want to reiterate that it's completely okay if you're not up to that yet. Please don't worry. It is also completely fine to ask questions from the first few weeks of the course or if there's anything in the workbook that you find interesting and you'd just like to know more about. Okay, so Tim and Em, we might move to you now for some questions about everything that comes into this course, so no pressure. It's going to be able to discuss digital forensics with you, given that you have an interest in this field. But for those who haven't met you before, could you each please give a quick overview of your roles and your experience behind the digital forensic?
So I may as well kick off. So thank you for the introduction before, Lauren. My name's Tim Myers. I am the Principal Advisor for Pacific Incident Response here at CERT New Zealand. Prior to starting my role here, I spent close to two and a half years as a digital forensic analyst with New Zealand Police. And that had me working on a range of cases, some of which are very similar to the case study that you have presented. So not a completely foreign piece of work, which is nice. But prior to, and then prior to police, I was sort of running my own business doing software development and other bits and pieces. So I've been around IT for a long time, but those two and a half years as a digital forensist was certainly probably some of the most interesting and rewarding work that I've done so far. On to you, Em.
Hi, I'm Em Waite. I'm a cybercrime investigator with New Zealand Police, as Lauren said. I've been in police now for coming up twenty-five years. I joined in the UK, spent ten years policing there before moving to New Zealand and been working in cybercrime for coming up three years now. And as Tim said, great to be working with you guys. And the case study, I love that it's something that's realistic. It's something that we see fairly often. So it's good to get the exposure and the input. Thanks for inviting us.
No, thanks. Thanks for agreeing to appear. So we covered a lot of issues in the course, the case study that we looked at last week. But can I ask, is tech facilitated abuse of this nature a fairly high proportion of the cases you look into? Or are you able to comment on what the balance is between the different types of cybercrime?
In terms of cybercrime, we see a lot of this, especially with the younger population. It's easy to say to people, don't share nude pictures online, but we equally, we have to accept that unfortunately, particularly with younger generations, they do. It is a normal activity or a perceived normal activity for a lot of the younger people. And a lot of them don't have the maturity to really understand the consequences of sending those images, particularly of having faces in those images, for example. And we see that frequently where, you know, it's a naivety, unfortunately. So we do see a lot of this kind of, of this kind of cyber-enabled crime. You know, young people live on the internet and, you know, use it to facilitate pretty much every aspect of their life nowadays. And that's, you know, it's one of the inherent dangers of doing so. So yeah, we do so, you know, really quite frequently.
Yeah, it's interesting. It does seem like it's a problem across, you know, pretty much every community that you, where you have phones or have the internet, you have this bad sort of followers. So we might just start by looking at some of the things that we looked at in the case study. And I might just ask the group to sing out. Feel free to unmute yourself or raise a hand. Are there any aspects of the case study that we looked at last week that you found particularly interesting and would like us to talk through a little bit with Tim and Em? Please feel free to raise your hand or also just speak out. And to recap, some of the digital evidence that we looked at included social media accounts, payment records, mobile phones, desktop computers and CCTV footage. So quite a few different types. Okay. Well, I was curious about a few little things, so in the meantime, I might just ask one or two questions that were interesting to me during the case study last week. So I might start with you, Tim. Does it matter that, so we were looking at Bob and we know that when the police walked up to his door, that Bob deleted the passwords and the app from his phone. So I just wanted to know, is that important that he actually deleted those things and are they recoverable by other means?
Phone, mobile phone forensic is actually quite interesting. It's very different to examining a computer, for instance. So when applications are deleted, generally speaking, very little traces of them remain. There might be some logs and networking and things like that that might indicate that the application was used or the websites were accessed, but some pieces like that. But generally speaking, if stuff's been deleted from a device, it's quite often gone for good. There are some exceptions set where it's, you know, the data might be stored in a database and it's recoverable from there. But, and again, every phone is different as well. So then again, you know, when you're talking computer forensics, you're talking about Windows, Linux, macOS, those systems, a lot of them don't change too much. With the exceptions of, you know, when people start adding encryption and bits and pieces to those devices. But with mobile phones, everything changes between model and manufacturer. Funnily enough, little quirks, just even firmware updates will change the chances of actually recovering deleted information from a system such as a mobile device. You know, you can actually do two extractions on the exact same model of device and get two different data sets out of it, depending on any plethora of different factors there. But in some cases, it wouldn't matter that those have been deleted. Data from those things, and it's sort of, I think it feeds into another one of the questions. But if he's deleted the app that actually viewed pictures through the app, they could be cached somewhere else on the device itself. So you could have evidence that those images are on the device, but maybe not be able to link that back to that particular app at that time. But other traces around on the file system of the phone may actually lead you to believe that, you know, start piecing things together that the application wasn't installed. Bits and pieces like that. So I hope that answers it.
Yes, definitely. So if you were looking at the process for potentially recovering data from the phone to see, to see if you could identify any cache data, where would you start? Could you talk us through the process?
Yeah, so there are a couple of tools that the Digital Forensics Lab uses here and they're both provided, they're all provided by Selbret. So they're a company that provides mobile forensics tools, both for extracting the data and actually analyzing it in a program. So you'd be starting with acquiring the device and using one of their tools potentially, and then examining it with what's called physical analyzer. And you can go through that. It's pretty user-friendly, so we'd give this to investigators as well. So this is a tool that you can, you can package up as a reader format. See, an analyst gets the full version and you can package up a reader package for an investigator to look through as well. So it's a real user-friendly sort of software which you can run searches for. So you'd go for the real easy stuff. You'd search for the name of the app. You'd search for potential names of accounts and see if there's any artifacts that come back with those details in them. And that can be a very, very quick way to find data really easily and actually start proving charges. So there's evidence that, yeah, his email address potentially is passed or was stored on this device at some point.
Okay, thanks, Tim. One of the questions that, or things that we discussed during the previous session was also about using geolocation data to show that Bob was the one in the relevant location who messaged Maria and uploaded the photos. In terms of obtaining this data, is that the same process? Would you need to look at the mobile phone device itself? Or is it, does it depend? Are you able to talk us through what, where that data is usually accessed from?
Yeah, so geolocation data can come from, again, heaps of different sources. So things like Wi-Fi networks, photos and videos that are taken around the same time. So if he's taken a photo or a video or done some sort of other activity which records it, the phone would be the best option for this. We very rarely see this on a computer unless it's pictures have been taken on the phone and installed on the computer and then you've got GPS data in them. And again, depends on the settings of the phone. So if someone's gone to their phone and turned off geolocation, you're pretty much out of luck with some of that data. And then some of that isn't super accurate either because there's several different versions of sort of location which have various accuracies. So if you're talking cell tower data, that could be over a range of kilometres. You're talking Wi-Fi and like mobile signals, they start narrowing it down. So you really need to look at where that source of information is coming from and then trying to work out how accurate that might be with regards to your investigation. But again, those tools pull out all that stuff and collate it into a nice area. The only thing that, as a digital forensics investigator, if you found something that was of relevance, you'd want to be confirming that the tool has done it right. There have been a number of instances and cases that I've worked on where timestamps were wrong. So geolocation put someone at the scene of a murder. When you actually looked at it, the timestamp was GMT zero and not in our local time zone. So he was actually there in the afternoon rather than in the morning of, which would have been super relevant. And we had investigators getting super excited about this going, hey, this guy was actually here, but he was actually there in the afternoon, which they already knew.
That's, that's interesting to know. So there are some, some potential issues where the data extracted by digital forensics techniques actually can get it wrong. So that's, that's really interesting to know. Are there any other sorts of examples you can think of where you need to be really careful with the potential for the data to show the wrong thing?
Timestamps would be the biggest one, particularly in countries that might have multiple time zones or even daylight savings. Sometimes the tools don't account for it. So if you've, if you've had a crime that happened, you know, prior to daylight savings and you're looking at it after the fact, you know, the change obviously happened in between, you might be looking at stuff that's an hour or two out, depending on things. And it's happened, it happens a lot. But it's just another thing to keep in consideration. We've even had cases here where a tourist will be visiting and the time zone on their phone is set to their local time zone. So they come to New Zealand and then you're investigating their phone, but everything's in, you know, US time or, you know, from China or something like that. And all of a sudden, you've, you've either got to just change the timestamps of the software, but you've got to also be just wary of that fact that, you know, if your timestamps are wrong, you could be looking at a window that is different to what you actually might think. And that's the same with CCTV. CCTV notoriously terrible for timestamps because everyone sets them up and then never updates them. And they'll either have completely wrong time or timestamps are off. I know I've worked cases here where the, the police have come in and said, we're after a particular window, you know, four hours of CCTV footage. And you go, nothing happened in that four hours. It's dark, but it's supposed to be in the middle of the day. And then you realize again, timestamps are just wrong. So you've got to then work out the timestamp and export the right footage. So it does trip you up a lot.
That's, that's really interesting. I might just ask, has anybody else had an experience of working on a case or a matter where that has actually happened? Alma, I see that you have raised your hands. Could you perhaps share an experience of working on a case?
Hi, sorry, I, I wanted to ask a question.
Of course.
Okay, so this is, thank you. In relation to preservation, I just want to know how you deal with it. Interestingly, the, according to the fact scenario, the pictures were circulated online. I just want to know how you deal with it in practice.
Do you want to go in on some of that?
Yeah, there's multiple answers, I guess, to that question. In terms of once an image is shared online, you've really got no control over it. Once it's been shared to another entity, neither police, digital forensics or the original person taking the photo or sharing it has any real control over it. The best that we can do is to try and record or screenshot would be the best terminology. So we have tools that we use that can screenshot images so that we've got a sacrosanct recording of what was on a website or on, you know, whatever the online platform is at a set date and time. So that we can evidence at a later date, if we were to go to court, we can evidence that at this particular date, date and time, we can categorically say that these images were displayed on this website or this platform and were available to this audience. Ideally, like in the case of Facebook, we might be able to say that it's at this day, date and time, it has been viewed by X number of people, that it has been shared by this number of people, you know, which would give an indication of exposure. If it's a website like explicit.com, for example, it might be a case of just accessing the website and taking a recording, an evidential recording of the website, of the images on that website at that day, date and time, so that you can evidence later. You've got no control over whether somebody deletes that from a website, whether the website changes, whether it moves, whether it's uploaded to other websites. You just, once it's on the internet, you've just got no control over where it goes from there. Is that, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to know how you deal with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alma. Would anyone else like to comment on some of the more technical aspects we've been talking about or share your own experience of working on something similar? Oh, yes, I have. Please, please go ahead.
Good morning from Fiji. Two questions. One, how do you deal with phones that are locked with passcodes? And what legislative provisions do you have for to extract this phone versus personal privacy?
Right. The legislation side is probably more in. In terms of the digital forensics work, the tools that I've mentioned, Selbret, and there's another one that's available to law enforcement called Graykey, which deals with iPhones. If they're locked, a lot of the times we can bypass PINs or brute force the actual PIN code on them. Depending on how those devices are set up, this can take years. So as far as I'm aware, I've still got cases that are with police that are still trying to crack phones. We'll get to a point where someone's like, we actually don't need that anymore. We, we don't want to continue that process. But a lot of times, particularly with Android devices, you can circumvent the PINs on those. But again, depends on the device model, manufacturer, bits and pieces like that. It gets quite tricky dealing with all the different types of phones, but yeah, you can get around a lot of the PIN codes.
In terms of legislation, in New Zealand, we have legislation. So in a case like this, for example, we would do a search warrant for the phone or for the devices, laptops, that kind of thing. And as part of that search warrant, we would include a request to examine the devices themselves and also data, like cloud data, you know, anything stored on the device, anything stored on the cloud, but relating to that person or to those devices. So we would include that as part of our search warrant, which would give us, legislatively, that would give us a right to seize the devices and to have them analyzed for that information. In terms of the PIN codes, New Zealand has separate legislation so that we can, we can demand that the person give us the PIN code for a phone or a device. And if they refuse, there is a separate charge for refusing to do that, which obviously isn't a fix-all because it doesn't actually give you the PIN code they can maintain and refuse to give it to you. But it does provide a penalty and I guess an incentive for them to provide the PIN code, you know, and prevent getting an extra charge load.
Just a follow-up question, you know, once you use those methods of breaking those passwords, is there a question on the authenticity of the content of the phone? Because you are not going through the door, are you coming from the window or from the aircon vent?
Really good question. So the tools themselves have all been independently verified and I think they're pretty much proven in courts around the world. So that helps aid the case that nothing has changed on the device. There are instances where stuff does change, like sometimes screenshots get taken on the device from these tools or even from people trying to interact with the device as they're connected to these things or get them into to download modem bits and pieces. All of that stuff is documented as we do it. So if we, you know, we document the process and then it comes up in a court and goes, hey, you've changed some stuff. And it's like, well, yeah, we documented it. You can tell that we seized the device on this particular day and there are changes from after that time. But we can explain those changes and so long as they're not evident info, you know, then you're fine to cover that as well.
I think why I asked this question, I have a homicide case that I'm dealing with and I have iPhone X, I think, or is it XR? It's locked with six codes and I'm looking for our brothers in Australia or New Zealand to help us. I think that's the only way I'm going to break through this case. So this was the reason I was asking this question.
Yeah.
And also, if you see the Fiji Police webpage, yesterday we have launched our digital lab here and the equipment that it talks about from Selbret, we had that installed yesterday with assistance of Australian Patrol Police.
That's awesome.
Thanks, I have. It's a shame that Rachel's not here to join today for the FAP, but I know she'll be pleased to hear that your digital lab has launched. So we might just have another question about encryption, just to keep following the discussion. I am not sure about what the situation is in everyone's different countries, but in Australia, we now sometimes use fingerprints to unlock particular phones. In terms of obstacles that that might present to the investigation or in terms of data extraction, are there different types of encryption that are the most challenging to progress with?
The encryption on devices is generally a couple of different types. There's what's called full disk encryption, which encrypts the entire system, usually with a PIN code. And then there's what's called file-based encryption, which is every file has its own unique encryption key on the system. So generally speaking, the tools have gotten better now. The encryption type doesn't particularly matter. It's more about the operating system and the actual hardware itself. So Selbret's very good at finding vulnerabilities in these systems and they can bypass a lot of things, which is scary. iPhones are still probably some of the most secure, just as an FII. The PIN codes on those take ages to crack. The Android ones, when you connect them to a Selbret device, sometimes they can take seconds. You know, they can do attempts at some alarming amount of speed, you know, like 10,000 attempts a minute sort of thing. Whereas iPhone on the newest encryption takes one every 15 minutes. So as you can imagine with a six-digit PIN, that can take a number of years. But the brute forcing tools aren't just going from, you know, six zeros through to six nines. They try the most common PINs first, which is cool. So they have these different list sets and then they'll, they'll crack it based on that. The issues we run into most commonly in the labs would be the brand new devices. There's no exploits available for the VAP or brand new operating systems. Every time a new version of iOS is released, we're going to have trouble actually getting into that phone for quite some time, unless you can get the PIN for it. Then sometimes you just can't get into them. Sometimes even when you can get into them, you don't get very good extractions off of them just because of the way the devices are. Sometimes you just can't get anything off of them. And that, again, applies to a lot of, of the different Android versions, different Android devices. You know, we've got Oppos and Huawei's which have been terribly awful to try and get any data off in the past. And we see a lot of them here in New Zealand, but they don't see a lot of them overseas, which is why Selbret doesn't really prioritize them. So the encryption itself is, is less of an issue because if you can bypass the PIN, then you've got a decrypted, decrypted device. The only thing to bear in mind is that there are two different states to devices. So there's what they'd call a hot state and a cold state. A hot state is a device that has been unlocked previously and has, has not been shut down or locked back out in the meantime. They're generally much easier to get into. So again, with iPhones, sometimes you don't even need the PIN to get an extraction. They can actually just, because it's in a hot state, pull out what's called an instant AFU, which is after first unlock. And then they can actually pull out pretty close to a full file system off of that and then proceed with the brute force if needed and you can get a bit more decrypted data. And then proceed with the brute force if needed and you can get a bit more decrypted data. But generally speaking, if you can get a device while it's hot, keep it in that state, attach a power bank to it, do what you need to do to keep it that way, and then get it to a digital forensics lab or tool if you've got them available.
And in terms of procedural matters and how you proceed, are you finding that the technological advancements that Tim mentioned, does that present additional challenges for you when you're looking at how you approach the investigation?
Are you asking us?
Yes, sorry, the question is for you, Em.
To be fair, in terms of investigation, my role as an investigator is to seize those devices and keep them sacrosanct and to get them without allowing any data to be changed. So I'd be looking at getting devices into a Faraday bag and getting them to Tim or, you know, to a DFU as quickly as possible so that they can do that, the technical side of things. I don't profess to have any technical knowledge when it comes to actually analyzing and downloading data or trying to break encryptions and things. And I wouldn't try to do it because if I tried to do that, I'd then got to, I risk having to stand in court and give an explanation of what I've done, why I've done it and what the implications are. And it just overcomplicates something when there's experts available that have got the tools, the techniques and the training to do that. So for me, it's, I mean, it's disappointing when you get, you know, a device and you you send that to the digital forensics for analysis and they're unable to get something back. It's always disappointing, but in terms of an investigation, you don't solely rely on a device to give you information. You'd be looking at your bread and butter policing skills to try and attribute your offender to the crime so that you can evidence it. You know, and then and treat anything that you get through digital forensics as a bonus.
That's really interesting, Emma. And I think that's a good jumping off point for us to perhaps revisit the case study if you've had a chance to look at it. And perhaps hear from you on, if you if you are faced with that case study, what would be a good place for you to start, given the range of digital evidence that's mentioned? And is there anything that you would prioritize in terms of something that needed immediate action? What would be the starting point for you?
I'm pretty meticulous and I like to be really well-prepared and have a really good overview of of the cases that I'm investigating and dealing with. I also tend to open cans of worms and go in every possible direction to maximize the evidence I have available. So I go through, whether I've got a victim statement or, you know, a narrative of what's happened, I go through and highlight the things that I think are really important, you know, the the offenses, you know, what's happened. I try and take out all of the, what I call the fluff and bring it really back down to the bare bones of, you know, what have I got? What evidence have I got? What do I need to do to keep that evidence sacrosanct? What evidence do I need to get? And how do I attribute that to a person, to an offender? So having gone through that with the case study, probably the first thing I would look at doing is preservation requests to Facebook. Because in terms of attributing your offender to the offending, I want that information from Facebook to show that at this exact day, date and time, you know, both Maria and Kai's Facebook accounts were logged in. Once I had that information, I'd be going to the service providers. In this case, obviously that's come back to the library. And I'd be looking at them keeping the CCTV sacrosanct, getting those devices. So in this case, the most important one would be Bob's device. Because any evidence in terms of the hacking software and the passwords is going to be on that. But also, the devices held by Maria, where the original photos were, I'd be wanting, you know, that device to evidence that that's where my original photos were and that this day, date and time, she sent these photos on Facebook to a person that she believed to be Kai. So certainly for me, the first place to start would be just preserving as much as I could, starting with going to Facebook and preserving that information and then working outwards and kind of fan outwards to the devices and the phones, computers, CCTV, things that I needed to preserve and keep sacrosanct.
Thanks, Sam. That is really comprehensive and I can see how much you love it. So before we move to a question from the chat, then can I just quickly ask? So Facebook obviously is an international company and there's also explicit.com, which we're unclear, but we haven't said in the fact scenario where its headquarters are. How much of your role would you say is involved in things like mutual assistance requests and police-to-police cooperation?
We typically try and avoid doing mutual assistance requests if we can, purely based on the fact that it's an arduous process and it's a very time-consuming process. We do do them, but I would not rely on getting the information back to be part of my case. I mean, I think the only time you'd rely on that would be where that was literally the only source of evidence that you had available to you. I would always go with trying to evidence through other means and that might actually be putting together circumstantial evidence. So in this case, you know, your CCTV of Kai, of Bob rather, in the library at the exact day, date and time that the Facebook logons show that the account was accessed, that Maria was also logged on at that same time, that that device is the one that was used. I would try and attribute it through other means rather than rely on a mutual assistance request. I know from our experience, it takes somewhere between 12 and 18 months to get the results of a mutual assistance request back. And you can't rely on that actually being the information that you want or proving what you want it to prove. It's in many cases, we've done mutual assistance requests and the case has gone through court and finished its proceedings prior to getting the results of the mutual assistance request back. So it's an arduous process that really we kind of rely on as a last resort if we really need it. As opposed to a go-to, it's just unfortunately, nature of the beast is that it's it's time-consuming and arduous and makes investigations really inherently difficult.
Thanks, Sam. So with that, I think a question that we've received in the chat from Labu Gibbons is potentially relevant. Maybe we know the answer already, but the question is, is it easy for you to get information from Chinese companies such as WeChat or other social media apps from China?
No, would be the short answer. I can't remember off the top of my head. I could find out. I'll come back for an absolute answer on that one. I'll log on to my laptop and double check myself, but typically, anytime you're asking for information from an entity that's outside of your own jurisdiction, you're really relying on their goodwill. They are under no obligation to provide any information whatsoever. And some countries, some companies are just much more difficult to deal with than others. Typically, Chinese companies tend not to want to give us information. Often we're lucky if we get any response at all. But it does depend on the company, you know, companies like Facebook, Meta tend to be very law enforcement friendly. Companies Uber, the bigger kind of multinational corporation companies tend to be law enforcement friendly. And they will give you the relevant information on a production order from New Zealand. But it is, it does depend some, like I say, some European countries, Chinese companies often just get no response whatsoever. And it's really difficult to get information. With WeChat, typically we would rely on a victim to give us a download of a conversation, for example, as opposed to going to WeChat.
Yeah, and I just want to add to that, WeChat, the digital forensics tools, if there is WeChat application on a phone, some of those tools will actually pull out that chat as well. So I worked on a case where there were Chinese nationals and they've been using WeChat a lot as they do with their main. I had over 2 million chats, which took, you know, a good day just opening the extractions and passing the data. But it just goes to show you that, you know, although you may not forget that from the company itself, if it's on the phone, there's a chance you might be able to pull it out.
Great, thanks. We have a question from Gabriel. Please go ahead, Gabriel.
Thank you, ma'am. It's an honor to meet the both of you. My question is based you guys can hear me, okay? My question is based on on the Selbrite. There's a chime skip which is supposed to to help us examine non-standard phones, especially Chinese mobiles. Just is do you guys have any anything to then share on those chime skippers? And really, I mean, I've got two cases here, which involve two non-standard phones. So I didn't get anything out of those non-standard phones. Could you guys share any little bit of what you have in your experience with the chime skip related to Selbrite?
Yeah, so sometimes that is just the luck of the draw and you sometimes just don't get any data off of the device. Particularly some of those really, you know, obscure models, sometimes there's just nothing you can do with them. Sometimes it's worth trying to find out what chipset they run, because sometimes there are generic profiles in these tools that will say, I can run everything on a MediaTek or Qualcomm. So if you can get something that might match that chipset, sometimes you can use what's what they call a generic profile to actually get somewhat of an extraction off of the devices. Sometimes they're not great. Sometimes they're better than nothing as well. The other option is just trying to investigate what level of encryption might be on a device. Because there are advanced methods where you might do what's called a chip-off, which is generally a destructive process where you physically take the phone apart, take the chip off of it and then read it in another tool. We used to do a lot of them in the digital forensics unit, but of course, encryption sort of stopped that because you're just getting an image, but there are still a couple of phones here, particularly provided by Vodafone. Some cheap sort of burner phones that people would use here and you could actually do chip-offs on those. And we found Selbrite had very limited support for them. So you could get an extraction off of them, but it wouldn't be great. But if you actually did the chip off, you'd get the full amount of data anyway. So there are other options, but sometimes that is just the luck of the draw. You know, we've had some very, you know, what should be very easy phones to get into and you just get nothing off of them, which is unfortunate, but sometimes that's all you can get. I hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Gabriel. So we might move to some of the course content in a little, in a moment. But before we do that, Em, I might ask you sort of a catch-all question. So we've looked at what digital forensics can uncover and the kinds of electronic data that can help you show particular things in our case. Would it be possible for you to comment on some of the most common gaps that it's really digital, difficult to use digital forensics to demonstrate when you're looking at a cybercrime?
That's a, that's a big question.
If you wanted to bring it back to the case study, what do you think that you would need to use conventional investigation techniques to demonstrate?
I think it's always best to rely on your conventional investigation techniques, rely on your bread and butter policing skills, thinking outside the box, you know, looking at, you know, other possibilities to evidence. Your ultimate goal is to attribute your offender to the offending. That's ultimately what we want to do. I would never rely on digital forensics as a catch-all to prove any case, just because it's, as Tim said, it's, you know, you're lucky if you get the information. You know, if you do get the information, then it's just the icing on a cake, really. But it's, I don't know, I really, I hate cases where that's the only evidence. Like, you know, I really feel almost kind of claustrophobic when I've got cases where there's where I can't think of any other way that I can prove an offense or attribute offense and, you know, offense and offender through any other means. We live in a world where, you know, cyber-enabled crime is becoming more and more prevalent and will continue to do so. And, you know, people who use, you know, computer systems and the cyber world to commit crime become more and more sophisticated every day. So we have to accept that we're always going to be playing catch-up. Their goal is to stay ahead. Our goal is to try and catch up and be one step ahead. And for me, I feel like the way to be one step ahead is to rely on your bread and butter policing skills and to kind of keep yourself grounded in terms of what other policing skills do I have, what other tools do I have available to me that are going to help me to prove this case? And then use the two to complement each other rather than rely on one or the other.
Does anyone else have anything they would like to share regarding the case study last week? Or any particular aspects of the case study that they found challenging that they'd like to talk through in a little bit more depth? Please feel free to raise your hand as well or post a question in the chat. I have, please, please go ahead.
My question is perhaps away from case studies or maybe it can relate to that. I see it this way, you know, when a entity is introducing a product, they bring along a lot of crime with it. One good example I would give would be the Empesa platforms that we have or other platforms they bring. Do you have legislative provisions back in New Zealand for corporate responsibilities? If I'm introducing a product, I must, as an entity, I must have the corporate responsibility to make sure that I contribute to the security of the country.
Yeah, that's probably a bigger question than I'm qualified to answer, truthfully. There are, we have data protection laws, obviously, so any company and feel free to correct me, anybody, if I'm wrong here, because my knowledge of corporate law is not as good as my knowledge of criminal law. But my understanding is that the data protection laws are that the companies are duty-bound to have provisions to protect any data, any information that is either shared using their platform or is maintained or held by their platform. They, you know, for example, where we have companies that are subject to ransomware attacks and data breaches, they are obligated to report that. And they have to report that at a national government level so that we're aware of, you know, where data breaches have occurred and the relevant groups can step in and try and minimize, mitigate the damages of that. As for exactly what the corporate laws are around that, I couldn't answer that question, but yes, there are laws regarding the the ownership and the care of that information, if you like.
Thank you.
I think as a broad comment, we understand that data protection was very quite widely across the world. I understand that the European Union has some of the the more strict regulation around data protection and other jurisdictions have a range of approaches, but it's a really interesting question and a very topical, I have, thank you. So given that it's 9:53 already, we might move to some of the more general content that we've been considering throughout the course to give everyone an opportunity to clarify anything they're a little unsure about while they've been going through the online content. And also just to ask any of those broader questions, perhaps about content that we haven't covered in the case study. So to kick things off, I might ask a question that goes back to module two and a comment about wanguiri fraud. So the question is, some of the class have expressed interest in the concept of wanguiri fraud and understanding this better. I understand that it's a situation where you get a phone call from an unknown number, you call them back and it turns out to be a line that charges you by the minute or you end up paying a very large phone bill with this scam. a line that charges you by the minute, or you end up paying a very large phone bill with this scam. Um, is this currently a threat in New Zealand and are you able to comment on what some of the threats you're seeing come through recently?
Um, so starting with the wanguiri fraud, I will admit openly, I had to Google that. I've never heard it called that before. Um, we call it, um, and you can laugh at this, we call it the Lord of the Rings scam because it's one ring, one ringed, anyway. Um, so I've only ever heard it called the Lord of the Rings scam or, um, you know, some kind of, you know, reference to that, but essentially how it works is, um, you would have a premium, um, phone service um, that charges extortionate fees when you ring it. Um, and working for that service, you have people that sign up, and this would be your offender. Um, they will sign up, um, to work alongside those premium companies and their job is essentially to keep somebody on the phone for as long as they possibly can to maximize the amount of money that it charges and they then get a percentage of whatever the total, um, the money that they get. So typically they will phone overnight or sometimes, you know, middle of the day when people are typically at work. Um, it'll, the phone will ring once, sometimes they'll manage even to hang up before it's audibly ring, um, rung. Um, people then see a missed call, they dial the number back, you know, to say, missed a call from this number. They get put on hold or they might get through to somebody in a, um, a scam call center that will give some reason for the call, put them on hold, ask them lots of questions. They'll do whatever they can to keep that person on the phone for as long as they possibly can and maximize their financial gain at the end of it. So that's essentially how it works. Um, we do see it in New Zealand. Um, it's one of these scams that we seem to get in fits and starts. You'll get, you know, a couple of years ago, we had lots and lots of problems, um, with this. Um, where people were getting these phone calls. And there was a lot of media input in terms of trying to educate people not to return the calls. Um, I would assume that that was perhaps effective because it seemed to then drop off. It's one of these things that seems to become an issue and then disappears for a while. Um, and then out of the blue will become an issue again. Um, currently I've not seen any probably in the last twelve months. I haven't seen any of that kind of, um, report come through to us. Um, typically what we see a lot of is romance scams, business email compromises. Um, cases like, um, the case study that we're looking at today where somebody's shared images online. Um, in New Zealand, we have legislation for harmful digital communications, which is really helpful for cases like this. Um. And then we also see lots of, um, fraud, cyber-enabled fraud type offenses where somebody sold something on Facebook, for example, or a social media platform and somebody selling fake concert tickets, for example, and, you know, lots of victims buy said concert tickets and you know, may get a fake ticket in an email or, you know, product never turns up. We see a lot of cyber-enabled fraud. Um, website frauds, that's, um, fake websites people buy, people don't do their due diligence to check websites before purchasing and you know, money is spent, you know, things like that. Cryptocurrency is also becoming, the last twelve, eighteen months. Um, has also become much more prevalent with people investing in cryptocurrencies but not protecting their passwords and their seed phrases, um, not being meticulous about emails and receiving phishing emails where they give up their seed phrases and have their wallets hacked and emptied, um, investment frauds. Um, it's just, there's really, I could go on and on and on. There's just so many. Um, it's, yeah, we, we just see, those are the ones probably we see most frequently, I would say.
Thanks, Em. That is, um, a very broad range of cybercrime. Um, I am familiar with most of those in Australia as well. Um, and I understand they're probably familiar to everyone else. Um, please do feel free to, to shout out if you've heard of similar examples in your own jurisdiction, but I think for us, um, the romance scam is always, always a classic. And, um, there's been a recent one of people texting and, um, trying to spoof a relative's number and then trying to obtain money. Um, so just to sort of keep the, uh, discussion focused on digital forensics, Tim, um, if you were to, to investigate one of those scams, um, perhaps one of the text-based scams, um, what kind of data would be relevant? Um, uh, firstly, I guess on devices and secondly, in relation to social media accounts. And, um, what would your role be as an expert in helping to, to identify that?
Yeah, so a lot of, um, cases, and we'll come back to acquiring their lives, text messages, bits and pieces like that. In terms of text fraud and things like that, you're probably not going to get a lot, um, than what you've already got from the telco perhaps. Um, you'll see that you got the text message, you'll see the number it came from, um, but if you, if you've got the case, you've probably, you probably already know that data anyway. Um, in terms of social media accounts, again, you'd be looking at what's stored on a device and potentially looking at doing a download from something like Google or Facebook, depending on where the offending has taken place. Um, here in New Zealand, that can require a separate search warrant, so if, if a search warrant has been executed at a property and then devices come to the lab, uh, if we go, oh, actually, we really want to do a Facebook download or, or a Google takeout, um, that investigator then needs to go back and get what's called a, a remote access search warrant, which is more paperwork for them and they just love more paperwork. Um, so, um, when we do get those, we, we then have the authority to log into those accounts with passwords that we might find on those devices and see if we can get downloads or even with a device, a password that might have been supplied by the suspect when they were, when they were arrested. Um, so in those instances, that would be the majority of what we look for. Um, and then it would just be investigating it from there and seeing what we can pile over those, those downloads.
Thank you. Um, I'll just pause there and, uh, see if there are any questions from the group. Or any, any of the content that's particularly interesting over the past, um, seven weeks, that's a fair bit to get through, but. Um, may feel free to share if, if any of this is resonating.
While they're thinking, just going back to your, um, geolocation questions, one of the things that I would probably look at, um, like for this case study, for example, is was Bob wearing some kind of, um, Fitbit, some kind of watch that, you know, has your location data on it, you know, if you can't prove, you know, through his devices, can I prove that he was at, at, at a location and kind of support my CCTV evidence, um, by going to Fitbit, for example, and asking for location data or, you know, it's Garmin, there's, I mean, there's lots of Strava, for example, a lot of people with their, you know, into fitness or on Strava or, you know, there's many other apps and sites, a lot of which are law enforcement friendly. They won't necessarily give you content or anything that's considered to be content, but they may give you, um, you know, things like IP addresses, um, latitudes and longitudes um, at day dates and time, and that might assist in placing somebody, um, where you want to evidence that they are. Other things to look at are things like wifi beacons. A lot of shops, for example, um, in New Zealand, for example, you know, we're in the city at the moment. If I walk to the train station from here, I get a text message on my phone from one of the local hair salons that I've never been to, but must at some point have used or somehow they've got my phone number and I get a text message saying, come in and we'll give you twenty percent off. Yeah, and that's wifi beacons that a lot of shops have. You know, you go into a shop and you get a text message that says, oh, fifty percent off your visit today. Um, you know, if you can access the information on those wifi beacons, you can also build your picture of where somebody was at a, you know, at a certain time. So if you can get, you know, the text messages from phones, for example, showing these things, you can go back and follow that trail of, um, of breadcrumbs and wifi beacons to show where they are.
Interesting. I, um, haven't had that experience, so, um, is that, is that through, um, Bluetooth or like, do you have to have a particular service enabled?
Yeah, it's a lot of iPhones particularly, we'll, we'll get it. Um, it is, it's Bluetooth, I forget what they call them. It's, it's like the chips, you know, the, um, what are they called? Those new air tag things, yeah.
Some low-energy Bluetooth.
Right.
So it's the same, it's the same sort of network that they use for Find My Phone and the AirTag, so my Apple device is here, Em's is over there. If I, you know, if her phone was unavailable for whatever reason, um, and there was a wipe signal for her phone, but mine was nearby. Uh, it could use low-energy Bluetooth to actually send that wipe signal to her device, um, even if it was out of reach of normal internet services.
Okay, um, well, please, anyone, feel free to raise your hand in the last ten minutes if, um, there is a question that you would like, um, our experts to cover. Um, while we're sort of waiting for people to, to have a think, um, I might turn to, uh, the process of getting to work with, say, prosecutors, if you're looking at taking a case for them. Um, can I ask, what are some of your recommendations for prosecutors when working with police and digital forensics experts on, um, any issues that might come up with digital evidence and, um, how to communicate uh, clearly what the limitations of that evidence or advantages might be in court?
It's a new question for me. All right. Um, so we, we get this quite a bit. Um, we're the subject matter expert, um, and prosecutors and, and lawyers, just as far as they're concerned, we're a big black box that gives them some data and they just trust it, um, but they don't necessarily understand it. Um, so when we're explaining stuff, um, in court or to a prosecutor, often use a lot of analogies, um, to try and relate it back to something that they would understand. Um, I had one particular case where we were examining a log file on our phone and why data may not have actually been on that device. Um, and I said to them, that's, you know, it's like, you know, if you've got your car and you've got your tires on your car, the more you drive it, the quicker you need to replace those tires. So the more the phone's being used, the quicker the logs are being overwritten. So if you're using your phone twice as much as Em is using it, yeah, she might better get data for the last thirty days. I might get data for the last two days because I'm, I'm using my phone a lot, a lot more. Um, so using analogies like that where someone might understand, it's like, yeah, I replaced the tires in my car because I drive, I'm a, you know, I'm a salesman on the road. Um, they're gonna, they're gonna have a very different experience with their vehicle. Um, then, then say, you know, someone is just driving to and from work every day. Um, the same goes for the log files on your devices.
Thanks, Tim. Um, and Em, would you like to comment on that question as well?
Yeah, I mean, for, for me, in terms of working with, um, prosecutors, I always make a point of, of having that conversation with them really quite early on in terms of what evidence I have available to me, what evidence I think I'm going to get. Um, what possible charges, what are the most appropriate charges? Um, what am I most passionate about? Um, you know, those kind of things, are there charges that I really passionately, you know, want to, to get home on? Are there ones that I kind of feel are two bites at the same, same cherry? And, you know, I want to pick one or other, those kind of things. And really kind of looking, um, you know, discussing with prosecutors, you know, from, they're much better at knowing from court proceedings and court processes. I do this every single day, um, you know, and I'm sure for, you know, for the, um, prosecutors and judges on, you know, on the court, you know, your knowledge of court, court proceedings and what, what you're likely to, to be able to evidence and, um, you know, is, is much better than, than ours is, you know, we're focused on an investigation, you're focused on proving it. What we need to do is give you the evidence so that you can do that job. Um, I think it's really just important that your prosecutor understands your case, understands, um, the digital side of it. Even if it is only through analogies that can be used so that they've got a, a good understanding of how things have happened. Um, you know, which, you know, this kind of course is, is brilliant because, you know, the only way you're going to do that is through education and by doing these kind of courses and improving your, your understanding of these things, it give, you know, puts you on a much better footing. Um, so my, my role really is to make sure that my prosecutor really understands what the case is, um, that they're not going in, you know, into a courtroom without being armed with the tools that they need to, to evidence something. Um, and in terms of explaining it, you know, I would bring somebody in, you know, from DFU that can really explain the technical side of it a lot better than I can.
And just, um, just to add that thread, have either of you ever seen a really effective instance of presenting digital evidence in a way that sort of made the light go on for the court?
Some good question.
It's, it's a big question again, so, um, feel free to come back to me later and I can show it to the class, but just in case you had one off the top of you.
Yeah, I, I don't have any on the top of my head. Um, a lot of my court appearances, I've, I've sort of sat with prosecutors before the case and, and explained my evidence in a way that they can then understand it and they can then structure their questions so that, and more or less just a yes, no for me. Um, and, until you get to, you know, a court examination and then of course all, all bets are off, but. Um, in terms of the prosecution side of it, when you're, um, explaining it to the, to the Crown Prosecutor, it's definitely been very helpful. So in the, the cases that I've done, we'd have a call, you know, thirty minutes to an hour before the trial. Um, and they'd just go from my evidence, my statement, um, that's some pieces like that. And then we would, we, you know, explaining it to the prosecutor, then gives him a chance to go, well, you know, I can get the information out of you by just answering a whole bunch of yes, no questions. So, but I don't have to think of stuff on the spot and he knows what I, my evidence is saying as well, so. Um, that, that's been the best for me, um, so no real, like, light on moment, but the right yes, no questions can, can really get through.
I think the closest I would have got to that is I once described the internet and the computer world as, you know, if, um, if for New Zealand Police, for example, we have a road policing strategy. Um, we have a strategy for dealing with vehicles on our roads in New Zealand. Um, and we have that because it's tangible. We can see the roads, we can, we see the impact of the car crashes. We physically feel the impact if we're involved in a car crash. Um, and for me, the internet is very much the same thing. The only difference is it's not tangible. Um, and just because you, you can't see it doesn't mean that it's not there. Um, so for me, I, I would imagine, I, I imagine it like a roadmap, you know, if you, if, if I'm going to travel from where I am now in Wellington to somewhere in Auckland, there are lots of different roads and junctions and ways that I could take to get to my final destination. And the internet is very much the same thing. You're logging on at your device and then you're taking different routes and using a different roadmap to get to your final destination. Um, but if you try and imagine it as something that's tangible, then it makes it much more, much easier to, um, to, I think, understand the concepts of moving along that journey. Um, and the, the things that can happen on the way and the, you know, the, the junctions that you're going to come to and the decisions that you're going to make. Um, that worked effectively, effectively for me in that core case. I don't know if it works effectively for others.
No, it was, it was very, um, very helpful for me, but. Um, so, uh, in the last five minutes, we will just move to, uh, a final question from the group. Um, and I have a question from Appleina in the chat. Um, Appleina is curious about any situations you've encountered where the offense occurred in one country and the offender was located in another country. Uh, have you ever encountered any cases like this? And I think the, the question is, uh, how would you?
Welcome to my world. Welcome to my world. Every day of my life, literally, every day of my life. Um, the vast majority of the cases that I deal with are a victim in New Zealand and an offender that is not in New Zealand. Um. How you deal with it is, it, it depends case by case. Um, if there is, um, a case, for example, um, many of you may have watched that movie that was out recently, The Tinder Swindler. Um, cases like that where you can attribute an offense to that person. Um, there is motivation for the FBI to become involved because it's impacting on people in their jurisdiction. Um, so in those cases, we would look at doing, um, getting our files to an evidential standard and sending that through Interpol to the FBI. Um, and it would be treated as an additional to their own cases. Um, the vast majority, the ones I see are things like romance scams. Um, where somebody, you've got a victim in New Zealand who believes that they're in a relationship, um, with somebody who more often than not, we can evidence that that person is not who they are, who they claim to be, and we can evidence that they're often in places like Nigeria and Ghana. Um, there's no way of pursuing an investigation, um, outside of New Zealand to Nigeria or Ghana, unfortunately. All we can do in those cases is, if it's recent, very recent money loss, we can try and work with the person and the banks to try and recoup money. Doesn't often happen, unfortunately. Um, but there's no way that we can pursue an offender in that situation outside of our jurisdiction. Websites is another one. People buy things from websites that are fake. Often we can prove where the website is based, but we can't prove who an offender is. And again, there's no capacity for those kind of things. The volume of them is just so great that, you know, we can't send those things overseas, um, for investigation because they just don't have a capacity to do so.
Thanks, Em. Uh, so we have now unfortunately reached time, even though I feel like we've scratched the surface of a lot of topics. Um, so I would like to thank you very much, Tim and Em for appearing and also to the group for all of your questions. And also to the group for all of your questions and experiences. I think, um, it's been wonderful to hear from you as well about what you think the issues are in your jurisdiction and what you're experiencing. Um, as you go through your day-to-day lives. Um, so thank you very much, uh, to everybody. And, um, the next session will be again in two weeks' time on the 28th of October. And we'll be focusing on, um, moving the case, uh, and getting the case ready to present in court. So, uh, thank you, everyone. We will wrap it up for today, but I hope you have a lovely weekend and we'll be in touch very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.